Just sit still. We need to keep moving, okay? So, right now, this thing's funded with ARPA money. And we have enough ARPA money to do it. And infrastructure is one of the, especially water and sewer, is one of the key components that they like to see. You, this money utilized by. What I did discuss with the CD is now that I know they have that emerging contaminants grant.
Yeah.
And that that is 100%, at least this year it was. It could change next year. This year it was 100% funded, not 60/40. I would like to apply for the, excuse me, the emergent contaminants grant under WEA. For Rixon Ave because they do have PFOS, PFAs.
Yeah.
And pseudonyms out there. So, I think that that, we would have a good shot at getting that. So, if we did get the grant, we would have to get the grant before the project is completed. You can be three quarters of the way through that project and you can still get the grant money and utilize it. As soon as you've completed the whole project, then that stops the ability for you to get a grant. So, again, right now, I'd like to take that on a parallel path. We can walk and shoot them at the same time. Because we know those residents up there need water from what they're dealing with. And this is the only opportunity they've had in the last 50 years to get. Because other than consolidating them into the Marshall Water District and having them pay ad-alarm rates for no service until they get it, nobody wanted to hear that up there, okay? And the other thing would be if they went out on their own, that Macy Lane did, and floated a bond and paid it for themselves. You know, that's not always conducive because you can't apply for the grants as residents where we can down here. So, again, I'm trying to work my way through this, spearheaded the best I can, on a parallel path. And I'm not object, I have no objection for putting in a grant. We would have to, it's another thing I might have to check into is ARPA money for grant purposes.
I was just gonna ask for that, actually.
So, I'm gonna check into that because, again, they're not part of the Marshall Water District. I can't use Marshall Water District funds up there to do anything. I am allowed to use ARPA funds for what I have right in front of us right now.
I gotta throw another curveball.
Go ahead.
So, Monday morning, I get up and Bob Sutherland, man, digging holes in my line. So, I went out, asked him if there were any who were there. Apparently, the fellow that bought the orchard, 46 acres, is gonna apply for major subdevelopment.
Well, see, he was saying he was gonna do a minor.
He's got 46 acres that he wants to develop. And I'm just going by what these fellows have.
I got a building about three weeks ago down here and he was looking at a house for him and a couple of his kids, but things changed.
Well, this guy was, I mean, again, you were just.
You're talking about this, this one?
Song there today.
So, it seems like a heck of a nice guy.
And, and the property is unbelievable. I don't know where they would come out with driveways and roads out into.
They looked at two. And I, I wouldn't say inherit because that's like a planning board and CBA board. But they did look at a couple of the hurt. He showed me a couple of the.
My, my only point is, is that they're gonna be looking for water.
Yeah, absolutely.
And just giving you a heads up on that, that if they're looking for water, it changes everything, as far as I can see.
Yeah, you're gonna change almost 400 users in the Marshall Water District. And that's the whole thing, is you need, need people to be in the district to split the cost and make it more affordable for everybody. That's why, by taking that line out of the middle of field up there and moving it over to Flat Rock Road. If we can pick up 13 homes down there, you're picking up at least eight up here with the tromblees. That's another 20 something properties that you now are paying into and helping out the bills for the Marshall Water District. And they got water. They don't have to worry about a well running dry or water in the garden or anything else they wanted.
You know, and again, I don't know what type of homes he's, he's planning on building. Are they high-end homes? Are they double wides?
And there was a gentleman, I won't say his name, but there was a gentleman that wanted to do pretty much a 35 house of development just the other side of the Flat Rock Road, but wanted to make sure that we could supply him with water and he had water rights. And he's just outside the district, so, and tell him. Now, those are things that when we didn't read boundary lines, you have to start looking at these projects to make sure that they have the incentive to build them by getting the municipal services they need to make it worthwhile for them. Because if he's gonna put five wells in to take care of 35 houses, that's more expensive.
So, anyway, getting back to this, not to jump off it.
No, I understand.
In terms of Rixon.
Yep.
Could we check and let's see if we can utilize ARPA funding to apply for that? What did you say? $3,500 for that application for the grant over there?
For what, WEA?
For whatever you want to do with a contaminated soil type grant.
The emergent contaminants?
Yes, yes.
That's under WEA.
Yes.
And that would depend on who we hired. I can get, you know, La Verge to give us a price on that. I can get Barton Le Judas. We could put, put it out to two or three people, see who comes in at whatever their estimates are, like we did last time.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that's a reasonable idea at that point.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's common sense if, if we can get it 100% paid for.
Of course, of course.
It, it, you know, under that, the guidance stays the same as it did this year.
Sure. And you said we get an answer back around September, October or something?
I'd say probably closer to probably October. That's when they came out this year. I knew, I had the guarant, I had the guarantees that even though they picked our project and they wanted to fund it, that they ran out of money before they got to us. So, that was, that was worse than just saying, "No, we didn't pick your project." You know what I mean? Yeah, yeah. Marshall Water Project, we picked it, but we, we. See, every year those grants change. Like, when I applied two years ago, the WEA grant was 60% funded up to $5 million. So, that means we could've got $3 million if you had a $5 million stopgap, which we had a bond for over $5 million. So, we would've got the full $3 million. This year, they changed the guidance of the program and they, they added money to it, but they didn't add money to the funding of it. So, this year, the grants were okayed up to projects of up to $11 million, which means now you could get a $6 million or $5 million grant. So, the money didn't go as far. Even though, because last, two years ago, they had 140, almost 150 projects. This year, they were right around 70 something projects.
And I'll tell you what kind of bothers me, and I wanna be very polite about this. When La Verge went in there and he included the tromblee property and he drew a subdivision map of it. That kind of bothers me a little bit because in the event, and I'm not saying that it won't, but why if, why if ARPA would not cover the cost of that? That's a huge cost to go in and draft a huge map on that for the tromblee, Rixon Avenue, when we originally made the agreement for Rixon Avenue only. That's what bothered me about this whole thing. That's why I voted no. Now, if, if I could've seen a letter from ARPA approving that upfront, if someone sent a letter saying, "Oh, no, it's okay. We can use ARPA money for that," then I wouldn't have had trouble doing it.
Go to your guidance on ARPA and that is one of the original four boxes corners.
I'd like to get something written.
It's right on the ARPA website. Infrastructure, water and sewer infrastructure is what they wanted to see. They wanted to see it for speed. Internet and they also wanted to see it for website design.
We're talking a private developer here.
You can keep saying that, but it's not.
Honestly, you don't know how I feel when I'm saying it.
I don't wanna argue with you, but you're wrong.
I like arguing with you.
But, but what you're saying is not true, okay? It's, it's not factually true.
Have the talent attorney send a letter out. Have him review it.
Are you gonna let me talk? Listen, the tromblees, even though they may own a business, are only looking for water for their three residents. They are no different than any other resident that lives on any other road in this town that is part of the Marshall, the Marshall Water District, okay? So, you can keep putting that under the contents of a private contractor and that's what we're doing. We're not. We're trying to get water to three extra residents up there. And in, in the interim, it's a no-brainer to me to save anywhere from $87,000 to almost $90,000.
It's a simple request to ask our talent attorney to look at, a simple request. We pay him so much a year. It's simple.
Can I, can I just add something?
Just like this. This was a simple request, but this might cost us about $500 to get an analysis and writing.
Have our talent attorney write a letter? He gets paid by the year. What do you mean by that?
I said, the analysis that we just got done, I don't know what that's gonna be yet. This cost analysis that you wanted from La Verge. We're gonna have to pay for the hours that they spend on that, okay? So, we can keep spending money, again, that, that we all already recognized was gonna be a savings because when I talked to the county health department, they told me what the savings were.
Can I just say something now?
Yeah.
I'm only here for a year. A lot of you guys are gonna be here for a lot longer than that. So, when you look at Rixon Avenue and you look at tromblees.
Yes.
Kevin's looking at a phase four where you go from tromblees all the way down to Broadwell Road and you pick up, uh, Mr. Gerke's property and Tony.
I understand that, sure.
And so, but, so again, so you do tromblees and then you do the rest of it. And then you do stage four and you do, go up Broadwell Road. But also, what I just brought up to you, you got another guy that wants to develop this hill up here.
Right.
So, why would you worry about, oh, well, we can't let these people do it because they're private residents? Why would you take and try to take and develop that whole square, all that Broadwell Road, all the way down Mason Street, and hook it and have one big?
Loop.
Loop. It doesn't, it just makes more sense to put everybody you can within reason into that water district. So, only you're gonna grow.
Sure. We only have, the award for ARPA was 528,000 or enclosed, I'm sure. But sure, this town board has already approved the Macy Lane project. And we have actually, actually no idea how much that Macy Lane project is gonna be.
That's a false.
And I just don't wanna run out of ARPA money.
We've got a number on that, Reg.
We already got a number.
What is it?
I don't, I'd have to look up paperwork. I don't have it right here.
Do you see the figure though?
No, I don't because.
I do.
When you're looking at, when you're looking at, first of all, Reggie, your ideology doesn't even make any sense because.
I think it makes sense.
Well, listen to me. Let me see if I can explain this. If you're looking at, you'd rather spend $150,000 to do that just Rixon Ave up there or $170,000 to do just Rixon Ave, depending on if we use ductile iron or high pressure PDC. And we can get it done for like $87,000 or $90,000 for ductile iron, then it's a no-brainer. You have a savings of what I just told you, between $76,000 and almost $90,000 by letting the tromblees put the pipe in the ground. It's, I don't understand, I, I get myself because I don't understand your reasoning. You're saving money. It's private partnership with municipalities, which is what everybody wants to see. I don't care if you're looking at the state level, the federal level, or, or the county level. And it's a savings to the taxpayers and you're gonna save ARPA money by doing it that way. You will not save a dime doing it the other way. It will cost you almost $100,000, no matter what way you look at it.
An extra $100,000.
An extra. And we only have the water district because that is only doing a straight line into Rixon Ave.
Does anybody know how many building lots are on Rixon Avenue? You don't count Kevin.
Not counting the tromblees or counting?
Not counting, just on Rixon Avenue.
Probably four at the most.
There's four there now.
There's 11, isn't there?
Tried 14. There's 14 dozen lots on Rixon Avenue.
Okay, but they're, they're all under size? They're not developable?
Still 14 lots.
They're still there. You gotta still, you, you can't say they're not developable. Be because the simple reason, if somebody comes in there and decides they wanna do something with one, they can.
I respect that.
I mean, we cannot say they're never gonna use them. That's like saying they're never gonna use them. We can't say that. Because all of a sudden tomorrow, some millionaire might come in and say, "That's wrong. I want that lot. I want that lot. I'm gonna buy it and I'm gonna develop it."
Yeah, I'd look at that.
It's just something to think about.
It's a no-brainer. I don't understand it. I'll never understand that.
Kevin, that's a little bit of an insult, but that's okay. That's all right.
All right, all right, all right, all right. To me, saving 80 or $90,000 is a no-brainer. I don't know what it is to you, but it is.
All right, let's move on.
All right, the garage. Now, we did do the, the fix that we got done on the doors up there. So, what I would like to do, before I wait until February, because remember we put this on hold to put this out for a new bid up there. What I would like to do is send this out to Barton Le Judas, have them minus the work that we just completed. And then I want them to put this out to bid by February so that we can lock a contractor in by April. Are you guys good with that? Now, this is the, the remainder of the garage up there, the drainage and the floors.
We're gonna do the drain, the water oil separator.
To take in water or separator. It'll be all set to do that.
I'm only because, I know I'm missing something. Why, why are we, now that I care, because I think Barton Le Judas is excellent. Why, what was the reason for going with Barton Le Judas?
Uh, they came in lower than everybody else.
Well, there already has been a bid.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, and then we put, we put, we had Barton and Le Judas as part of their, their contract because it is. It's a, it's a big contract. We had them put it out for bid for us. They take, they were supposed to take all the bids after they were taken in down here at the town. Send them to them. They were supposed to rank them to make sure that they were still doing apples to apples. And then they were gonna rank them for us and what they felt was our best choice. Number one, best choice. Number two, best choice. Number three. What happened was when we put it out to bid last year, we only got one bid. That one bid came in at $203,000. That was about, Jesus, $100,000 something more than what we had told, that toll that it was gonna cost. We have the money. Mike, you have the, your unallocated fund reserve. We don't have to bond it. We don't have to do anything. We've been saving enough money in the unallocated fund reserves over the last two years that he's, he can, he can do it. But I, I had nothing and the board had nothing to compare it by, so we decided that this spring, we would put it out to bid again so that we, in hopes of getting at least three or four bids on it, so we had something to compare it to.
I agree. It's a good time of the year to put it out.
We need to do it now or we won't be ready this spring.
When is a good time for the construction?
First thing, we, we could have that. They could probably start, I would say, end of March.
You gotta get it going now or you're never gonna get it next year.
Is that a good timing for you, Mike?
Middle of May, middle of April. Well, that'd be great.
Thing is, we gotta look at two things. Last time, we stopped because Mike thought, oh, this isn't a good time. It cost us a lot of money on the other end.
Yeah.
I think if we get a contract now and we're happy with it, I don't care when the date is or when the month is or what day is. Do it. Let's go. I'm sorry. It's gonna be an inconvenience for Mr. Snyder and his guys. But again, we can't set on it and all of a sudden then we're gonna get another, six months later, well, it's gonna be $80,000 more now.
The high bid at the time was 80 something thousand, not 203,000.
That's very good.
We've gotta go with it. I mean, we can't just, I know it's gonna be hard for Mike.
We also got their situation.
November, any day.
I agree. Last time we waited, look what it cost us.
It's this time, it's the right time of the year where we can get these contracts.
Yeah, you gotta start.
The big contractors.
Did we have the one bidder before?
Yeah, it was just one.
Just the one, huh, that bid on that?
Yeah, that's why we didn't order it.
Let's get it out.
Cause like, like I said, I, I'm sure they put it in there saying, "Well, we'll do it high because we really don't need the work." But they hire us, we'll do it for that amount. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I think you gotta get going on it.
Yeah, that's what I say. I can't, I don't want us to wait until April and then by the time it gets bid and then they do the ranking and they get it back to us. It's June and then everybody's died up.
You gotta remember, they're lined, everybody's jobs are all lined up to these contractors all the way through the summer now, probably. You're probably not gonna catch anybody till fall.
We've already passed a resolution and hired Barton Le Judas. I just wanted to make sure you guys are good with me moving forward because originally we had talked about doing it in the spring. But the more that I've learned since then, these companies all get their work all lined up way before April.
That's what I'm saying.
Lined up for the beginning of the summer.
Do what you're gonna do.
That'll resolve the oil-water separator issue as well. That'll be done, huh?
No, it will. It will.
How is it holding up for you?
Ready to accept oil-water separator.
Oh, okay.
But we would, we would.
It doesn't include it.
It doesn't include it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's very different to see a flutter like that. It's been so many years.
And that's one of the things that Mike and I talked about was putting a tank outside rather than taking up a wall space inside. And there's several different designs that I've been looking at for up there, so, is the water well separator.
I hate to even bring this up, but I just will quickly.
Yep.
Would that oil-water separator issue require DCE to take a look at it before we got too far?
No, there's DCE compliance on now that we really should have one up there, okay?
Okay.
So, what we would do is, we would hire somebody else, again, an engineer. They would make sure that whatever the engineering is and the requirements of DCE would take care of that.
So, what do you gotta do? So, it's gonna go into a tank and then you get the tank pumped?
You, you could do it two different ways. Usually, there's a, there's always an oil-water separator tank inside, okay? And that will have a baffle in it. And again, as, as the oil floats on top of the water, that moves from, separates the oil from the water. It allows it to go into a secondary holding tank. Now, if you do it that way as a holding tank, then the holding tank would have to be cleaned annually. I think the fire station, we use, uh, so, I won't, I won't even give them a plug. But we, we use one out of Bunce Falls that is certified and does all the record keeping on it. The other way that you can do it is it goes from an oil-water separator into three filtration pumps and then out into a leach field. That's the most economic way to do it in the long term, okay? Because you don't have the cost of getting this thing pumped every three months or whatever. You know what I mean? As you, they wash trucks up there, the melt-off just from the snow, you had a ton of water on your floor all the time. So, like I say, if we put it just at a tank, you'd have to have somebody come in, you know, that handles sewer pump outs. They would pump that water out and then they strap it down at the city or wherever they get rid of it. The filtration pumps, filters, excuse me, filtration, uh, filters are heavily regulated by DCE. If it goes into a holding tank, they really don't give a crap because whoever sucks that out is responsible. Make sure they do the right thing with it. If, if you got it by filtration, then it's all on site and you have to carry logs. And you have to log when it's back flushed, you know, what the, you know, the readings were on, on the gauges that said that, okay, at certain pressures, you got, they need to be back flushed. But that's, that's the only problem with that is that you would be subject to DCE coming in, you know, six months or at least annually to come in and look at your logs to make sure that they are being back flushed. So, that the contaminants aren't just going straight through the filters because they're plugged and hanging out on the leach field. But in the long run, that's the cheaper system. It's more expensive to install originally, but you never, you don't have to worry about it. You know what I mean? You don't have the reoccurring cost of getting it pumped all the time. Down there, they didn't wanna have to worry about logs and whether it was gonna be flushed and whether it was kept up with the records because if you don't log it, it didn't get done, kinda thing. So, they went with the, the holder tanks down at the station and that way they don't have, it takes all liability out of them. It's on the carrier and pumped it out. But, you know, that's something we can discuss. It's not hard. It's like back flushing a pool filter. You know what I mean? It's not a real big deal. But you do have to log it and you have to show that you are, are keeping up with it. So, I don't know if that answered all of it.
Oh, it did. Thank you. Did.
All right, uh, is there anything else on the highway?
Yeah, yeah, equipment.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. Highway, I don't have one for everybody, but he did. He got me a John Deere. Asked him that. It's only good until the end of this month. Thanks for the money. I'll let everybody on the board take a look at this.
See, the last one, it was good for 90 days though.
Right.
Last year. You know, and I was just, I had mentioned that November and December, like.
The only question I got Mikey on this whole thing is, is this right here where it looks like they gave you a trade-in value. You said you wanted to keep it now?
Yeah.
So, this would literally go up by that amount there, correct?
Yeah.
All right, that's the only question I have. So, I'll let you look at that and then I'll pass it on the other way.
John Deere dealer? No, a John Deere dealer.
That's under state contract, so, we don't have to, we don't even have to bid it out. We can just use them because it's state contract.
And you've already got the money. So, you're ready to go there.
It's, it's time to go. I mean, come on, let's do it. You wanna do the floor? You wanna do this? You wanna do water? We, you know, let's, let's start now. Let's not wait till next.
So, this would give you a total of two loaders, if we got this one? Three?
Well, three. Yeah. So, if, if you guys wanna move forward with this, we could do a resolution on, on the 24th.
Well, where is this money coming from? Your CD?
It's, it's coming to full because remember we transferred $200,000 out of the unallocated capital reserve fund into the highway fund? We can never put it back.
Right, so it's coming, it's not anything that he's going to paper and wait that the, what is it, 30, 90 days?
Because it's a state contract.
Procurement, not procurement, where they, the, the voters get to come in if they have?
No need.
Okay.
So, don't get me wrong, okay? Don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna lie you about, I don't wanna say anything about that. Anything that we spend money on, they always have that permissive referendum.
That's what I mean. It doesn't have, that has to already pay for first?
They could come in and say, "Hey, we don't want you to buy this." But this is not a bond. This is paid for upfront with money that we've been saving over the last three years to get us to this point. So, you know.
And it's in the highway fund already. It's not where he's gotta.
We have to do no transfers.
Because other than that, if it comes out of your CD, it's gotta have permissive referendum.
Right. If, if he went over what the amount we allotted, okay, you're right. And he had to take it out of his large equipment fund, out of the CD, then again, it would be, again, that would be by permissive referendum.
Well, that was my question, whether you could do the resolution this month or should we do permissive referendum?
Resolution, you can pass it and it holds as long as there's no permissive referendum from the public stating that we don't want this.
Right, but you said he's, it's just a 30-day bid. 30 days.
We can act upon that. We can sign the contract. We have the money. We don't have to get a bond. So, we don't have to wait for a bond security company.
No, no, that was not my question.
The only thing that could stop it is by permissive referendum. If somebody wanted to say, "We don't want you spending X amount of dollars on a brand new front-end loader."
So, it needs permissive referendum, you're saying?
It would go on the paper, yeah.
So, then he can't buy it right away?
Right. No, but we can pass the resolution.
Right, but he's saying it's that price is just good for 30 days.
Right, right.
But, but you can buy it and, and the way it works, there's no money exchanged until the day of the delivery of the, the piece of equipment.
Right, and that's, that's just like the, the two fire trucks we, we're doing right now. We can pass the resolution to spend the money to purchase them contingent upon that, in that case, the bond is passed by the public to, to get the fire truck, okay? So, we can still do it. They just have recourse to say, "Okay, we don't want you to spend this money." And then we'd have to go to John Deere and say, "Well..." They just have recourse to say, okay, we don't want you to spend this money and then we'd have to go to John Deere and say, well, we're sorry. So, it would be subject to that and I would have to understand that going into the contract.
It's gonna hold that price for the whole month of January and going up again in February.
Couple of questions to you, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Usually, if you do a trade in, you don't, X number of dollar the new machine is worth. Have you checked with them to see if you're not doing a trade in now?
Yes, I have.
Same thing, or are you gonna save money?
Well, the price is there without the trade in. I didn't, I didn't bring one there.
I was gonna say.
I didn't see it, maybe I'm missing it someplace? Okay, I know, if it's, so you're saving money if you don't go trade it?
Well, you're not really saving any money because it all went up. You know?
So, let's try this.
Right, you're not saving dollar for dollar, but let's say the new machine is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
You're doing a trade in, they might say, all right, the new machine is two fifty four. But if you're doing it without a trade in, we can knock it down to two fifty. Have you asked them if you're not doing a trade in? If this, the price is here, I say I don't wanna put it out.
Right.
But, if you ask them, all right, we're not gonna do a trade in, we're gonna do it straight up. What the price might be, there might be a savings, you might save.
Actually, now that you said that, I, all I assumed was there'd be a minus with the trade in.
No, no, of course, I mean, I'm not saying.
And it may be.
It might be, that might be set in stone price.
Because it.
But I would still check with them.
Right.
You might save yourself some money there too.
The difference is, is under state contract. So, it's state contract. That place is probably not gonna change, it's like buying a new car where you're.
Thank you very much.
When you're buying. Ask them to make sure, but yeah.
I mean, you know, I don't know, I'm just asking. I don't like with the vehicle, if you go down with your truck and say, all right, I'm gonna trade it in tomorrow. They're gonna give you X number of dollars if you're trading it in, well, no, I'm not trading, I'm buying straight up, oh, well, then we can give you a better price.
I was going on, on, on state contract, is the price. And that might be.
I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
The price on the first page should be what it is without a trade in?
Yeah. Yeah.
If I'm correct? And, so I, I always, I figured that was.
Me, okay, I see the number here.
I can call him in a minute.
Yeah, just ask him, I mean, I don't know, I'm just asking.
Yeah.
And, and the other thing is, I see, um, you, you're offering for an extended warranty. How long is this, this extended warranty for?
Whatever it says on there, it shouldn't be.
Don't say, it just says extended warranty, six twenty four P powertrain and hydraulics, twenty five hundred total, okay, twenty five hundred total hours or sixty total months.
Yeah.
That's over the regular warranty?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now that, and if there's any other issues, he's more than willing to come.
Right.
To the meeting.
No.
It was extra five years, that's, that's, that's good, I like it.
No, I mean, you'd be crazy not to.
I didn't look at it until I could see right at the bottom.
But to answer your question is, I, I just took it for granted, it'd be like me selling you.
Right.
You know, if I was the business.
And you might be right, I don't know, I'm just saying I might ask.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I, I would say is because the state contract may not change, but it doesn't hurt like.
No, it does.
Say, hey, if we, now if we don't trade this in and we do this straight sale, is this still the best?
Yeah, I will.
Because they can, they can go under state contract, but they're obligated to stay no higher than state.
Why did we decide to maybe do a trade in now not to go trade in?
Well, there's a couple, go ahead.
Well. Uh, yeah, I, the machine's older, but it's still, it's still, it's still highly workable for us. And then, now we.
So what they're giving you, they're not giving you nothing, so I, I wouldn't be trading it in either, but I'm just saying, I didn't know your reasoning.
It's, it's always nice to have an extra piece of equipment around anyway.
So, there's nothing wrong with it, you're not trading it in because it's got something drastically to start happening?
There's nothing really drastic.
That's all I'm wondering, I didn't know.
And when we, we had spoken, there's multiple times that if the truck gets stuck on the side of the road, that's what they use is one of the, the front end loaders to go out.
Yeah.
Get them unstuck, so.
And we've had to use both orders.
He could use the old one just to mix the sand and do what he's gotta do down there.
That, that right there in itself is priceless.
And, and he gives them a spare piece of equipment where he's got down one because they always need to, and, and the biggest thing would, the biggest thing about this whole front end loader is that it allows him to buy the attachments he needs, like his road widening, if I'm saying it right.
Yes, yes, it's all quick connect.
Where all those were separate individual motorized pieces of equipment before.
I fully understand on the new one.
Now it's an attachment for the front, for the front end loader, so now instead of buying, you know, a hundred thousand dollar whatever, I can buy a fifty to seventy thousand dollar attachment.
Attachment and do the same thing.
I'm not saying no. I'm gonna let everyone know right here, I was with a supervisor from Buffalo this weekend in Rochester. They had two towns get hit with a salt shed.
Yeah, it's coming.
Immediately, it will be built now. I'm telling you guys, we better move on it, I'm sorry we gotta spend this money, but we're gonna get hit with it, it's coming.
I brought that out in twenty, two thousand and twenty, yeah, the first year I was here, I gave everybody the engineering on it, I gave everybody the quotes. You know, I can't do it alone.
I saw it right with this guy at dinner, he said.
So, if you guys are ready to move forward on that.
Nail them both.
Last I knew, the, the grant, it started out at a million dollars, it went to seven hundred and fifty thousand, now it's down to about half a million. So, the longer we wait, the more grant money you lose. Um, it looks like D C is gonna put, keep in a half a million dollar grant for this year. Uh, we won't get it this year, it's too late, we'd have to apply for it this year and the grant would come in, money would come in for the following year on twenty fourth.
Is there a cement pad underneath that? Oil ears?
Oh, God, no.
No, that's the next thing he said.
Yep.
One of them two towns got fined big time because they didn't have the cement pad underneath where it is.
Yeah, because it's, it's, it's lots of. It's lots of material because you're losing the salt to the weather.
It should be asshole, but he said cement pad at least.
And then it's the contamination of surrounding lands if.
We better, we keep discussing, discussing, we better start acting.
I agree, give me, give me, give me the word and I'll, I'll get it going.
Anyway, Mike, I definitely agree you should keep that piece of equipment.
Well, thank you for that.
Oh, I do too. Especially for that price, I mean, you're giving it.
Yeah, you know, I, I had time to think about it and I said, man, this is crazy. It's, it's.
It's not even eight for the price, you know, and you're just giving it away.
So, if you can let me know.
Yep.
That way we can know whether the resolution is gonna be changed as far as a dollar amount. Uh, before the twenty fourth, if you can contact them and get some kind of information on whether that, that price is solid, whether we have a trade in or not. Um, under that state, state contracted price, then we'll, we'll know to go forward.
You have more questions too?
Huh?
Do they have it?
Yeah, I give everybody a go.
Okay.
I'm pretty efficient.
Good enough. I know you are.
All right, so anyways. That brings us to our last. Topic tonight, um. This is on, on the New York City trip and who was going. I have had multiple emails with this, um. This new volunteer as an officer on one of the boards and he is very adamant about going to New York City for that training. Um, I got hit with these two emails again today. I, I liked his enthusiasm. Um, what it boils down to is whether or not, um, the money was allocated in the two thousand twenty three budget at. This particular board. Which the only thing they had in there, uh, this year was for legal fees. Um, I'll let you take a minute to read over what he's written here. He has some comparisons over, uh, the last several years budgets. Um, I will say this, as far as the, uh, multiple years that he used, um, three of them were under COVID, not that we're out of it totally now. Um, so nobody was even going down after that training and there has been cost increases from, um, back in two thousand and twenty. No doubt until we're caught to send somebody down there. The other, uh, issue that I would like to bring forward again is, uh. There are gonna be multiple members now on each board that we have to pay for training for, for this year. And, uh, this particular one is about two thirds of seven, four guys to another training in Saratoga. Um, and I, I'm looking at that cost too and, and it's not just, it's, it's all the boards are gonna have to keep up with that, that new, uh, recommendation. So, now that we've recognized that that's, that training is necessary and we're taking corrective action. Um, it's not just taking this much out of that one particular board's budget, you're gonna end up taking roughly another fifteen hundred out of it. To, to send three or four other guys to the other training, unless they do them online, which. We recommend that be the cheapest to do it, but, uh, and he has done multiple trainings online according to what he stated here, so he is. Looking at other avenues and is completing, uh, his training as he moves forward. He's filling a non-expired term also, so. He is appointed to a five year board membership yet. That would be coming up this year. Um, so, that's an, that's another. Piece of the puzzle that we have to think about too.
I only got one thing to ask you on this, sir. Aren't we? Don't we have certain individuals that's out of certain committees? He is not on the board, he is not having anything to do with us, correct?
Correct.
So then why isn't he going direct to Mr. Dorance, who is his leader? The head of this organization that he is affiliated with? And whatever the answer is there, shouldn't he be discussing this with him, not us? We have a work session to do, we have certain things to be doing and it shouldn't be handling somebody else's.
You're right, and, and I.
I mean, I have nothing against, I think training is great and, and I think Mr. M D, if I pronounced it correct, is a great individual and I think he's superior for the job. But I also think it's taking time away from what we should be doing and we've discussed it the last two meetings that I know of, if not more. And should we be?
You bring up a good question because like I said, my first response to him was. That goes to the chair of that board, which is a good guy, and then ask him whether he wanted to expend that kind of money out of his legal fees, because that's the only.
This is Mr. Dorance you're talking about?
And he goes, starting out at the beginning of the new year, he goes, I don't really feel that I should spend half of my legal fees out. For the whole year to send him to the New York City training because it's quite expensive. I, I agree with Mr. M D that it is the most consolidated training you're ever gonna find. And it's probably some of the best training that you will ever have the opportunity to attend. Uh, some of that discussion was to send him the following year so that we could put it in a line item. Make sure that he had the excess funding that he needed. And so, again, um, I agree, I don't know how this ended up to be my issue, I agree. Uh, or the board's issue, other than the fact that if we needed to do line item transfers, it would be this board that would have to do that to replace the funds. Of what needs to be done.
Well, first of all, you don't wanna be doing line item transfers this early in your budget, am I not wrong there?
I mean.
I mean, I'm not saying you can't, don't hold me there, but I'm saying it's not a good move to be doing it because you're gonna hear about it on the part.
Yeah, well, we, and that was explained, I talked to all of them and quite linked that as town supervisor, I, I don't, I don't wanna see a line item transfer in the first quarter. Of a brand new budget year. Usually we wait until the third and fourth quarters of the year where now we're transferring money so that we can utilize it and not lose it by rolling it over into the, the previous year's budget. That's when you lose it. But I, I agree wholeheartedly with your initial assessment, initial statement that this is between their board and their chair and if. Their chair says send him, then, you know, it's up to this board then to make a decision on whether we gotta transfer money.
Right.
But, uh.
Well, if I could. Can I say one thing?
Yeah.
Uh, going on what Mr. Bruno said, the reason that you have the Z B A and you have the planning board separate from the town board, there's a reason for that. That way, when somebody wants a building permit or whatever, this town board cannot go to that planning board and say, be sure this guy gets that building permit because he's my buddy or whatever. That's why the town board and those boards are separate. And this is as separate as I'm gonna be, and I'm gonna tell you, if, if somebody wants to bring this to a resolution, fine, but I would not go along with this at all. I can, I'm nothing against you, Mike.
No, I'm just asking, can I have permission, I know you don't usually speak in a, a work session, may I have permission to speak briefly to some of the factual? Things because.
Well, I think we kicked this game down the road here, I think everybody knows all the facts.
I, I think there is four things that you could fact check it and it's incorrect and that's what I wanna resolve in two minutes rather than having to email you guys again during the week. I'd like permission to speak just for a minute.
These are the emails that you sent me this afternoon around four o'clock.
Yes, I apologize.
So, those are the most up to date emails for any reasons for wanting to go to New York City, am I wrong?
I did not, uh, or I don't know, based on the question that Mr. Bruno asked, it, it seemed like the points were, were not addressed, in other words. What he asked and you answered is not the same as what I encountered just by looking at the budgets. In other words.
Where did you get those budgets, by the way?
They were in the front foyer.
Two thousand nineteen's in the front foyer?
Yeah, that's where I picked them up.
Yeah, there's only two thousand twenty.
As I say, I.
I picked it up.
I don't even have two thousand nineteen's.
Underneath all these things that I just picked up there again, out front in the foyer, you can check the films, but my point is, uh, the problem is Mr. Dorance, uh, said to me, I know nothing about budgets, I don't know what my line budget is. He goes, if there's enough money in there, you can go. Bob W always used to go on these trips and he used to make sure that there was enough money in there when he went. Now, Bob W went in twenty twenty, there's thirty five hundred dollars in the budget. I believe he went in two thousand nineteen, there was thirty five hundred dollars in the budget, there's thirty five hundred dollars in the budget during the pandemic. Mr. Dorance thought it was lowered during the pandemic since nobody went, but it wasn't and it's still the same this year for twenty twenty three, it's thirty five hundred dollars. Last year, the entire Z B A budget expended was eleven hundred and sixty dollars.
We've got all that.
In other words, Mr. Dorance wasn't aware of all these facts until this afternoon.
Have you talked to Mr. Dorance about this?
I called him and he didn't call me back.
Because again, it shouldn't be going.
I agree.
The councilman and the supervisor.
Because they also know all these other locals will have to go for training.
To directly answer that question, Mr. Dorance said, S.
He's wrong.
Okay. So, if, if I, if Mr. Dorance says, okay, then.
We're looking at, I, I have to look at three hundred and sixty degrees, not just one training, yeah. I'm all about training, I told you that the other day, uh, I'm a state instructor in multiple areas, okay? And Reggie and I have had multiple arguments about training, you know what I mean? It, it, and I'm glad to see, like I said that a couple of months ago, what did I tell you, I'm glad to see that you were coming on board with training is important, right? So, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm an advocate for training is all I'm trying to tell you, I've never been an advocate against training. The only thing that I have to worry about is what the budget is, then you put it on the record at thirty five hundred bucks, okay? It hasn't changed since, again, two thousand nineteen actually, all right? But everything else has gotten more expensive since then. And the one thing that I, I explained to you the other day, not to just sit here and reiterate it, is I would love to have a crystal ball or Ouija board or, you know, eight ball to shake up and say, all right, we're only, because we only spent a thousand one hundred and sixty dollars in two thousand and twenty two. That we're only gonna spend a thousand one hundred and sixty dollars in twenty twenty three. But not only do I have the cardinal knowledge that there could be a couple. Uh, areas where we could have a lot more legal fee this year with a couple of cases that they're, they're looking at. areas where we could have a lot more legal fee this year with a couple of cases that they're, they're looking at. But I also have a compounded issue because I found out with the thanks of Mr. Facto in, uh, this, excuse me, in December, um, the latter part of December, before we did our organizational meeting in, uh, January third, that we, we needed to have four hours training per board member now. So now we're looking at not only sending, having to send you for training, we have four other, a minimum of four other board members that have to attend training this year in a thirty-five hundred dollar budget.
The other email I sent you was every single one of them can do it for free, including me online. In other words, if you wanted to do it for free online, in other words, that's not gonna be a huge expenditure that is gonna suddenly come out of the sky where you're gonna, you know, in other words, everybody can satisfy their four hours for free online. But my other point is every single year that anybody wanted to go to the New York City trip, you could have said, you know what? We put thirty-five hundred dollars in the budget. We don't know if we're gonna spend all of it, so we better not send you. Every other time, that wasn't the reason.
But I never had a chair tell me no.
He did not say no. He said, if there's enough money in there, he wants me to go. He did not know. He wasn't aware of the.
That made me, but what you're telling me he said.
It's on film.
But I.
It is on film.
It's on somewhere.
It's on film on YouTube, him saying that he didn't know how much was in there, that I just had to check with you guys if there was enough money there. When I checked in December.
Must be after my conversation.
Okay, when I checked.
I just had a, a conversation with him.
When the resolution.
What I wanna point out to you, Mike.
Yeah.
Since twenty twenty, no one has went.
I know. I told her.
And this year, I am going as a delegate and Mr. Newton is going for code enforcement training. And there, I believe, are out of our budgets, like councilman budget, then his would more than likely be out of.
Code.
Code, uh, plant, would that be under zoning or?
Code.
It's a separate one then, for his.
The exact same thing. The budget was four thousand dollars for your board when two people went for the last five years. In other words, your budget has been four thousand, four thousand, four thousand every time they're gonna send two people. Or forty-five hundred, sorry.
That, that was for their training, the four thousand. Like you asked, you had, you were, in fact, you were, you should ask me for the freedom of information. You asked Mary about my contractual.
He told me to ask. Mary is why.
No, I told you to go down the door and talk to the town clerk. My exact words. Don't tell me what I said.
It's in an email. The first one is in an email from you to me saying you should go to Mary and ask what's in the budget. And I walked down to Mary and asked what was in the budget and I got misinformation. I was told that by August sixteen hundred.
North's budget, but what we were talking about the other day, as far as getting the budget, I said, go see Donna and, and.
I found it in the front.